We call this special board meeting to order regarding Crescent City Junior Senior High School rebuild. Time is ten o'clock a.m. We're gonna ask Superintendent Searcy if he will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. And I'll take care of the indication.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray, Father, in the name of Jesus we come this morning. We come, first of all, to say thank you. Thank you for your blessings, thank you for answered prayers. God, we pray right now, in the name of Jesus, that those that we have entrusted with the building of our new school, God, would do just what we know that they would do. God, that they would build those schools as if they're building it for their children. God, we thank you for this circle that stayed intact, God, that we may continue to move forward, to build and to open the skies for our children, God, that they may have opportunities, that they may be presented with things that they had never even envisioned or thought of. And then, God, we pray for those that are disgruntled or dissatisfied. God, we pray that these next four years, we will allow them to see, God, that our plans are for the betterment of Putnam County, our students, our stakeholders, and for all that are concerned, and, God, that they will come around. And for those that don't, God, we just pray, have mercy upon them. Now, God, this business meeting, run it the way, God, that you would have, and we'll be careful to give you praise, honor, and glory. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Yes, sir, you're ready.
Morning, everybody.
Good morning.
So we're here to look at the final GMP for Crescent City Junior Senior High School. The big picture is they were able to make it into budget. And what I mean by that is around ninety-six million has already been allocated for this particular project. And it was some struggles getting it under that much money, believe it or not. It's a massive school, a lot goes into it, and a lot has to be done in order to build that school that you see before you on that swamp land that the current one sits on. So they'll tease some of that out when they come up. One thing that I would like for the builders, Parrish, to hit is they've... So Greg designs the school and says this is what the finished product should look like. And then Parrish McCall has to figure out how to build it. And then, while we... while it's currently occupied with students. And so you know it was gonna be done in three phases, or that's what we brought to you before, while the students are there. So a new building is built, part of a building is torn down, and then another building is built until it's done, until the final cleanup. But they've changed that from a three-step process to a two-step process. And in that, that was one of the ways... one of the things that got us in budget. They did have some challenges with getting people to... or getting subcontractors to bid on some of the site work that had to be done. And then plumbing was another big challenge. But they were finally able to get it all done and within the allocated amount of money that we have for this particular project. So we won't have to go back to Tallahassee and beg for more. So here today is, of course, Travis Woods and Tim from the district. But we also have Greg Kelly, who's our project manager and the chief architect for this particular project, Bill Pearson, who's the president of Parrish McCall, Bryce Hartley, senior project manager, Gil Solano, senior superintendent, and Todd Brock, who is the senior estimator. I'm gonna bring Greg up first and let him just give you an overview of just the high-level budget. And then Parrish McCall will come up and go into a little bit more detail of your GMP.
Good morning, I get Greg Kelly. Good morning. Good morning.
Greg, this is dated eight twelve.
This has got today's date on it.
Yeah, I need today's date, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Mine has eight twenty-one.
Eight twenty-one is what we should have.
Okay, all right.
We'll blame that on Susan.
Better be careful down there.
Good morning. I wanted to kinda give you a quick overview of everything. Original funding we received for this project through the special facilities construction account was sixty-seven million, eight seventy-six, three hundred and thirty. That was the original amount. We looked at everything, got with the C.M. and did some figuring. We went after... went back and asked for an additional twenty-seven million, one hundred and ninety-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine, giving us total funding of a little over ninety-five million dollars. So that is the project budget. That's everything. So to begin with, the soft cost, you pay the architect there, reimbursables. And just so you know what reimbursables are, there's a civil engineer, there's surveying, there's geotechnical, there're plan reviews, permitting, commissioning, hazardous materials abatement, various energy forms, threshold inspections, and a lot of technology are in that right there. So that's the reimbursable. Fixtures, furniture, and equipment, that is the furniture that will go in the school. That is a budget that we have in place right now. I've talked to a couple of different companies, and that's a nice amount that includes furniture and some graphics packages for the school. So that's a good bud... that's a budget there. Permitting and inspections, that's part of... that's part of the permitting there. I think it's actually sixty-five thousand dollars there. Electronics, I put a budget in here for touch panels, smart boards, any electronics like that. The truth is, all of that, we're fleshing through it, but we think it's been covered in the GMP. So before this is over with, this seven-twenty-five is probably gonna drop down to the next column and end up in the owner's contingency. So you'll have probably close to a million and a half dollars in your contingency. So... but either way, you can... the district controls that money. That's seven-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand and that eight-fifty to spend as you need to there. Travis and Thomas deem necessary there. So that gives you a soft cost of a little over ten million dollars. When I take the ten million and back it out of the total funding, we end up with a construction budget of eighty-five million, thirty-one thousand, five oh six. Phase one of the GMP was one point nine one-two-nine oh seven. They are gonna present you a GMP this morning of eighty-three million, zero seventy-two, three hundred and sixty-six dollars. When you add 'em together, you're at eighty-four million, nine eighty-five, two seventy-three. So you're under the construction budget. Unless they change something in the last twenty-four hours, you... what they're presenting this morning is inside your construction budget, inside your project budget. All the numbers work here today. So that's what I wanted to start with, so.
Well, and with your background, that's what we depend on, Greg. We need you to keep us on top of it.
Yes, sir. So we're good today, and with that, I'm gonna let Bill come up and actually present the GMP. And, yes, sir? Yes?
Yes, sir.
Before we leave, so the district portion of this is thirty percent. I mean, that we... we, you know, it's a seventy-thirty split with the state, correct?
It is actually... you're millaged for three years.
Okay.
So whatever... it's probably a lot less than thirty percent, to be honest.
And my question may not necessarily be yours, but down the road, as I saw touch panels, smart boards, et cetera, I was thinking about the coverage, the insurance, or something goes wrong, you know, a warranty is what I was looking for.
Yes, ma'am.
This would be built in?
Yes, ma'am. This is built into it, and Bill can speak to that.
Because I know they're great at what they give to the teacher, that capability, but when they go bad...
When they go south, they go south.
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
All right.
I wanna thank Greg for being along with Thomas and I when we went back up there and got that other twenty-seven million dollars, because we wouldn't be here now if we had to do that.
That's wonderful.
Thank you, Greg.
As far as the payback is concerned, that money's already been allocated for us for the project. We have to pay back the three mills that you mentioned, Phil. And it's kind of up to us how we pay that back. Of course, we can't lock the special facilities for the next project until we completely pay it back. The money for that project is already allocated.
Yeah, whether you choose to pay for it three years, four years, or five years, that's your call.
All right, Bill?
Thank you.
Thank you. And I know Volusia County's got a fairly new junior, senior high down there in Seville, but, you know, near forty, but it's... we're gonna draw kids out of Volusia County into this new school, for sure.
All right, well, good morning. I'm Bill Pearson, president of Parrish McCall, and we're excited to be here today to present our GMP. I'll be honest with you, I'll always be honest with you, but this GMP has taken a lot of effort to get in budget and get the right subcontractors that's gonna allow us to deliver a successful project over the next three years. And that's one of the complicating factors about this project. Subcontractors, in general, can be a little bit leery about committing to a project that can last a duration of three years, have multiple phases, demolition, not renovation, but demolition and new construction. So there's a little bit of risk. And then there's some risk just based upon the location of Crescent City, getting labor and materials out there, and then being able to confirm some pricing and, to the greatest extent possible, hold that pricing. So we have been working closely with the school district staff, the architect, the subcontractor community, where we've been talking to them for months and receiving bids and documenting the public opening of those bids with the school district staff, and then really digging into the details of what did they really include based upon what we asked them to include, and did they make any variations? And that's where a lot of the work really, really went into it on this project. We appreciate y'all's confidence in us when we were here a few months ago, and you approved an early release GMP. And that has really helped us to get a good start on the project. Several activities have been completed already, and it's allowed us to have a good presence on campus that I think Tim would agree to, that when the kids came and the students came back, we were already there. Everybody knew where we were gonna be and where we were headed. So for the purpose of today's conversation, we are presenting a GMP of eighty-three million, oh seventy-two, three sixty-six. And that includes our best understanding of the construction documents, our best understanding of the existing conditions on site, a good group of subcontractors who are gonna be able to perform this work in the multiple phases. Couple of other things here. And we also... a couple of other things I wanted to point out, that there is a contingency, obviously, with every construction management contract of three percent that's included in this GMP. There are some allowances in this GMP that are for some unknown conditions, some items that we know about, but we don't know exactly what the extent of those items is gonna entail. And then we're also carrying some escalation money that the subcontractor community has kinda guided us towards on what we need to carry to make sure that we can have the material cost in the GMP as we get into year two and year three. And an important thing about the contingency, the allowances, and the escalation that I wanna make, those monies are in the project, but they're school district dollars, and we will not spend any of those dollars without Thomas and Travis's approval as well as Greg. So there's money that's in there, but it won't be used without everybody's authorization and approval. I've brought Bryce Hartley, our senior project manager, and Todd Brock, our senior estimator. These two have really been in the weeds for months working on this thing, and they've got a lot of the detailed information. We're all here to answer any questions that you wanna have. And as Thomas mentioned, I do think it's important that we just take a brief look at the schedule and the phasing plan, because one of the big things we were able to do with this revised phasing plan is start on the middle school classroom building earlier. And originally, we were starting on the CTE building and the gym, based upon how the sequence and the phasing looked like it was gonna go. But due to some conditions on site, there's some additional work that has to be done. There's some monitoring, there's a bunch of survey work that has to happen, and it's gonna take some time. And we really needed to get to a point where we could start building classrooms. And so we re-looked at the phasing and went over it with everybody and got approval that, yes, this revised phasing plan makes sense. And it allows us to start on the middle school classroom building as soon as we can get this GMP approved in anticipation of turning that middle school classroom building over next summer. And by gaining those classrooms, we're able to be a little more aggressive on the demolition of the existing buildings and shorten the overall duration of the project. So I think it's to everybody's benefit, but we'll go through it in as much detail as y'all wanna hear about. So with that, I'll kick it off. If anybody has any initial questions based on the information we previously provided, or if you'd like to go into...
I've worked with Parrish Industries and the different firms for twenty-five, thirty years. So I know you too, Bill. I feel good about where we're going, but I'm sure others were gonna have some questions. But I like what I'm seeing.
I have a question.
Yes.
So we'll be able to start on those middle school classrooms and then get those completed, and then be able to move to the demolition. How long will the demolition take on that, on those...
It actually is gonna be completed in multiple steps. I mean, the freestanding standalone buildings will come down at a certain point. But the main existing building that just looks like it just kinda grew over all these years, we're gonna take that down in pieces, and there's parts of it that are gonna remain while we take other parts down. But we've got it included in the GMP, that the understanding of keeping the fire alarm systems, the intercom systems, all the utilities, there's a lot of utilities we have to relocate just to keep the existing school active. So I'm not trying to be vague about your question. Demolition's gonna pretty much occur at the completion of each new phase. And I'd say it would be in the range of six weeks, two months for that demolition. Some will be more extensive than others. We obviously know it's an active school, and we're gonna do our best to make the loud, noisy, somewhat dust-generating activities at off-hours. But as we've met with Tim multiple times, everybody knows that we're just gonna have to be flexible and adapt and go through this thing. But working together, I think we've got a good plan laid out.
So phase one is this year, starting after today?
Yes, sir.
And then phase two will start next, August, after you complete the middle school classroom?
Right.
And the final phase will be the following year?
Right. And there's a little bit of demo we have to do this summer. We've already actually, this past weekend, moved one portable out in front of the school that's in the footprint of where this new middle school building goes. There's an existing building for in-school detention, there's a janitorial custodial building, some small buildings that we're gonna need to demo those to build the middle school. But in earnest, the big demolition happens starting next summer.
Do you do Saturday, I mean, weekend work, or not?
They might.
I'm just... no, I'm just curious.
I'm kidding.
When I heard you say loud noises, and I was thinking, well, they may try and get around it.
Depends on the contractor, what they're doing. He's ultimately in charge, and I look at him jokingly, because he does whatever it takes to get the job done. And when there are... honestly, when... there's benefits to the subcontractor to come in and do some of this large-scale demolition work
Yes, sir.
when the campus is as vacant as possible. And it's...
Yes, sir.
We've done this before, and it can be obtrusive for a little while. So we'll do as much of it as we can during off-hours. We'll obviously not do any during testing periods, we've talked about that. But there's gonna be some... there's gonna be some noisy times out there.
Yes, sir.
Bill, one question, one thing, I don't know if it's a question or statement. I don't need to Google the young lady's name that was abducted by a construction worker twenty years ago. But I know the rules and laws are very, very, very strict and stringent about keeping our construction workers and kids divided. So I would urge you and Tim to really work together. And whatever Tim feels like is necessary, make sure that we adhere to that. I know you guys will, but I just worry about it.
And that was one good thing that we did this summer, was establish our construction boundary. So we've already got our fence up. We've met with Tim and the staff about where they want gates. Those gates are closed and locked at all time. And everybody who steps foot on site's gonna have Jessica Lunsford back there on clearance.
Yeah, I remember Jessica.
And that was... it's an active campus. We're gonna separate ourselves as much as possible, but we're still on campus.
You know, instruction has to happen, but we gotta keep them safe.
That's right.
At the same time.
And we do have a planned windscreen to put up, so there's another layer of, you know, barrier protection.
Visual barrier.
And the biggest thing is, is the communication between me and Tim. Anything that we would do in the active part of the school would be... he would be notified in advance that we'll have X in the building and what we're doing.
All right.
So that we don't conflict with anything that he has going on in the school at any time.
Yes, sir.
Another thing that we're doing, too, is something that a lot of people don't do, but all of our employees will have big numbers on the side of their hard hats. So if they have any issue with any one person, they don't have to confront that person. They just call me.
Give you the number.
I already know who it is.
Excellent.
And I confront them immediately and find out what the situation is.
Very nice.
So the new middle school part that will begin, that is currently where the custodial... which I still call Ruben's office. The old library, no? I mean, the new library.
Between the media center and the CTE building now, the dwelling building.
And that's where the new...
New middle school.
Yeah, you know where the solar panels are?
Yes.
From the solar panels to the cafeteria in that area there.
Okay, so which building is that in this beautiful picture?
It's actually building twelve hundred.
Yes, it is this section right there, and we will add the cafeteria to it. But we're gonna build the classroom building freestanding first.
Okay, so the current cafeteria would still be...
Yes, the current cafeteria will stay online until we get the new one, Bill. One other change in the phasing plan of this approach, and Tim and his staff have totally bought into it, is that originally, when the new cafeteria was completed, we were gonna move the administration and guidance staff into the existing cafeteria temporarily with some operable part... not operable, with some temporary partitions. And we've come up with what we think is a much better plan, that the administration staff is gonna move into the... On the visual up there is the top-left corner of the gym building. It's actually some of the vocal activities. It provides them some still front-of-door access, so that parents and anybody else who's coming to campus, we're gonna build a temporary security vestibule in there that'll be... Make sure that nobody comes into campus that isn't supposed to be there. And they're gonna stay there for the duration of the project. Once the gym is done, they'll be in there until the final phase, when the admin building is done. So we think it'll give them a better temporary landing spot, and they'll only have to move one time, and it still keeps them in the front of the campus. So that was a benefit as well.
Bill, do you anticipate any issues with your permitting, you know, water management district?
I don't anticipate any issues. They've both been submitted for permit, and there's been some comments. Yes, sir, they've been submitted. We've received some comments back, working with Greg and his consultants, trying to get those resolved. I don't have the permits in hand, but we expect to get them very soon.
Right.
Looks like this one is the, I won't say hardest, but the strangest, because the new middle... I mean, new elementary school, flat, even though that E.H. Miller, you know, just leveled the building, didn't have to work around anybody. So we don't understand, but we understand that it's not easy. So you all up here and, you know, over there, so it's just, you know...
Our principals...
We know you're gonna do it.
Our administrators and staff know what to do. And if they have a problem, they'll immediately contact you guys and us, so...
Yes.
Well, I feel comfortable, 'cause I've done this before, remodeled schools with kids in school and work around them. We don't have the portables we used to have if we needed to bring them in, but I think we gave them all to the county for recreation and whatnot, you know. But it... I feel pretty good about it.
I think Joe Thiebault has them out there. He'd like to get... give away and get him another wing, but we'll cross that... we'll cross that bridge later.
Yeah.
So this is the front of the school?
Yes. With them having Cambridge, we won't have as many kids going there. And the current admin building actually sits out in this area.
So that hill is gonna... the hill in front?
It will be regraded, and there'll be new parking up in that area, the bus drop-off route. Everything, parking and bus drop-off changes.
Holly knows every inch of that school, so you...
You can...
I mean, period. So you just gotta show it to her, I don't know where you're gonna do it.
Holly knows where every blade of grass is on that field, that campus, I can tell you that.
Well, here's something, I mean, I don't know if you guys mentioned it yet, but you did decide to add a parking lot by the ball fields, is that correct, over on the backside of the gym?
Yes, there is a parking lot that's designed as part of the overall project campus. And part of the effort, I meant to mention this, part of the effort that we've been going through is that our estimate came in more than what the school board budget allowed. So we have provided and worked closely with everybody and got acceptance of some value engineering. And the value engineering, I would say, is probably in two or three, what I would call pots. One of the big pots where we can save money is by using alternative manufacturers that still meet the same criteria. One manufacturer for toilet partitions, we can get another manufacturer and save money. Nobody sees any difference. Another area that we looked at was, what are some things that are easy to put back into the school as we get further down the road and we realize where we've got some money savings, whether it's escalation, contingency, or allowance? And we're developing some priority lists, not just... it makes it more complicated due to the phasing, but because we have priority lists of, hey, these things have to go back in. I mean, one example is, right now, there's no stage curtains in the project. But the stage is one of the later buildings. But everybody knows you need stage curtains to go back in there. So we're developing an overall list, and then we're taking that list and applying it to the different phases so that we know when we need to pull which trigger to get those materials and still get them in a completed building. So we've saved some money there. And then the last bucket that we reduced, we reduced our general conditions costs by a significant amount by looking at this and getting everybody to agree to a revised phasing plan. It required a little bit more staffing, but for a shorter duration. And the other thing we've done is, as I mentioned earlier, the subcontractor market kinda guided us that we needed a million and a half dollars in escalation protection for material costs that, based on what the market has been doing and what the market is forecast to do. And we included that in our first estimate, and we've reduced that by five-hundred thousand dollars to a million dollars. And based upon our accelerated schedule and some other avenues we're pursuing where we can buy some of these materials through the O.D.P. process and still save the tax, we're gonna store some of these materials either in an adjacent area close to the site, potentially at our office in Gainesville, and some of them potentially at some subcontractors, but try and reduce some of that escalation. So between those three buckets, we've reduced many millions of dollars. But some of those dollars do need to get back into the project. And that parking lot is one of those items that's right now not in the project, but we know it needs to go back, and the gym is in one of the earlier parts of the project. So it needs to get back in sooner than stage curtains do.
Oh.
Any other general GMP-type questions, or would y'all like us to talk about the revised phasing plan? Or anything else y'all have questions about?
Soon we'd like, we're ready to move.
We're ready to go to work.
Well, I feel like with the Cambridge program and with some of the CTE and things that we've got going with this new school, we're gonna pull kids from Volusia County. So we're gonna have... you know, it's gonna considerably change, as it is in West Putnam with kids coming out of Bradford and Clay and a lot's were coming to the Q.I. school.
So how does that work, Dr. Searcy, from the standpoint of, you know, we have to have available capacity for those to be able to come, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, and they gotta come a pretty good way, so...
But they come for the program, yeah.
For the Cambridge program?
Cambridge, yeah.
Okay.
And now that we're into this STEM stuff with the car, you know, and stuff like that, aerospace, it's all, you know, the sky's the limit. I mean, Embry-Riddle, you know, a lot of kids went to St. Augustine, but now we're able to do pretty much the same stuff here.
And because we're certified, they're gonna come.
Mm-hmm.
They're gonna come, so if you build it, they'll come.
You make money on FTE.
So they're gonna do this.
And I don't know the exact numbers, Greg may be able to help me, but currently, the school has a little over a thousand student stations. This school is designed around just over thirteen-hundred student stations.
Right.
So there's a decent amount of capacity that's already designed and included in this GMP.
But we are seeing a lot of growth in that area.
Yes, sir.
And so I just wanna make sure, I mean, I'm... I guess we've got capacity in, you know, that those out-of-county kids, you know, qualify... I mean, our qualifications for the Cambridge program, I don't have any problem with it, but I wanna make sure we got capacity for our kids.
You're already drawing kids in from other counties, like David said, from Clay and other counties to go to our Cambridge school here, so I anticipate that would happen as well.
CTE program's huge, too. Tim just reminded us, we're putting automotive back at Crescent City, so that should go.
That's a big draw, yeah.
And Phil, you being our legislative liaison, we'll send you to Tallahassee to get more money to do the things to do. You know what to do up there.
Just give me an easy job.
Oh, goodness.
Once you get your automotive program up and running, who knows? Kids could take care of staff cars, you know, animal feed, you know, something like that. Yeah, I'm just teasing, but...
You know, you're right. We're fifteen miles away from Pearson-Taylor Junior Senior High School.
Yes.
Now, our sports programs are growing, getting better. Their sports programs are declining. We have students that have moved from Pearson to go to Deland High School, now they're coming back to us.
Because we're close.
Because of the things that we've got going on.
Absolutely.
Some of the good things.
Yes.
When you make offerings that help young people live better lives and you invest in facilities, you're gonna bring... you're gonna bring kids across county lines. And that's... we've lost kids from Putnam over the years, but we've... we're gaining more now than we're losing, so...
And you're even getting staff from there. Abby Cook, she's a personal of ours, because she taught my niece that, you know...
Yes, ma'am. It's great having colleagues across different districts and picking teachers up. You know, she was the teacher of the year in Slidler County, and we picked her up, you know, so...
And Ms. Fiola. And Ms. Fiola, even though she retired, she came from there. And so, so, Phil, we get them, we get their teachers from other counties that come and say, our kids are great, you know.
We are constantly recruiting, you know, you talk about recruitment fairs and things like that, but for me as a principal, you recruit twenty-four seven, every change you get.
Absolutely.
I think Phil had a question.
Yeah, I had a question, Dr. Searcy, so Clay and Alachua and Bradford and Volusia don't have Cambridge programs, correct?
That I can't answer, but maybe just in proximity.
I'm not aware of it.
Closer to come to our Cambers and go to wherever their Cambridge school is, so I couldn't answer that with certainty.
Okay.
The, it's this brick?
Yes, ma'am, the exterior of the school is brick, and there's gonna be some areas where there's gonna be an accent brick of a different color.
Okay, can you see that?
That was one of the cost savings items, to a good point. Originally, it was brick and an architectural precast component that was the accent color. And we saved significant dollars by going, keeping the original brick, and then the accent became a brick band instead of a precast band. But when you look at the school, it's gonna provide the same architectural features.
You have some precast entries up.
Yep, that's right, but the three main entries, the admin, gym, and cafeteria, still kept some of those large precast features. So, we didn't remove all the precast, we just changed it on the running trim along the building.
And I know a huge expense is underground, and we can't see it, but how is that looking? Like, are you running into some unforeseen things?
Yes.
You can tell that's her school, can't you?
There are some challenges underground there. The geotechnical reports that have been completed during the design phase have unearthed some less than what we would normally like to see materials, there's a lot of organic materials down deep. And that's one of the changes that went into this GMP from our previous estimate. We've worked closely with Greg and his structural engineer and a subcontractor that we have, and there's helical piles that are gonna support the gym, the high school classroom, and the CTE building. And those piles are gonna go down anywhere between thirty-five and fifty feet, and there's gonna be twelve hundred of them between those three buildings. And then we'll build a concrete grade beam system that'll tie it all together and then build those buildings on top of it. So, we're going through what could be determined to be less than advantageous materials and getting to the better structure underneath. And that's one thing that's led us to this revised phasing plan, because these buildings that have these helical piles, we need to put all the fill on the, these areas for the buildings, and then put some big steel plates there, and then we're gonna need to survey those steel plates and not do any construction. So, you may see that, hey, there's just a bunch of dirt sitting out there. But we're gonna have to come out and survey those plates regularly, but anywhere from a period of three months to six months before we start actual construction to ensure that those organics are not settling more than anybody anticipated. So, we're aware of some of the existing conditions on, on that campus, and I think the design includes everything.
So, what happened to the original buildings there along the edge of that should not happen to these banks?
Right, right. And how do you think that will affect the drainage at the softball and baseball fields? Will it affect it at all?
Drainage over there, we're addressing now as part of the early release package, and we've included some additional regrading of those areas. We're actually raising the practice, the playfield up six inches, adding some yard drains to try and capture some of that water with some piping that will take it to the pond and not leave it just sitting in those areas of campus. So, that's, that's one thing that Gil, through our early release GMP, is able to be working on now. And the, I'm sorry, and the entire site, it has a total different grading plan, stormwater management plan, number of ponds on site, there's more ponds, they're bigger than what they are now, they're, and it, it's gonna look entirely different than what it looks currently.
We'll be getting the water southeast of the football field now, over in that area, and then northeast of the site, out at the point out there where the two roads intersect, getting it out that way. So, we won't be funneling as much through the middle of the site and out under the cover there highway.
And so, maybe, will, Travis, will that help the, the land that hasn't been cleared for the ag? That, could we, if it's not a swampy area?
There's a natural creek that runs through that ag area.
Probably jurisdictional, too.
Yeah, it goes under seventeen, it goes to the lake, so there's really nothing we could do with that anyway.
Well, the water, the water that takes that creek and goes to Crescent Lake would be the, you know, that's where a lot of it's gonna go, so.
I really thought that it was mowed wider than it is now.
We shouldn't get no closer to the creek without having a water management permit.
Okay, I just remember my son, his ag project was to mow that area. The, the road that goes into the CTE building is the road that runs right even with the softball field.
Softball field, right.
And it is, it still will be available for parking?
It will be a lot shorter than it is currently. The CTE building goes on a portion of that parking lot. But there is still a portion of parking, and there's vehicular access to make sure they get the deliveries for CTE for steel and vehicular type items and ag items. But that parking lot does get smaller.
So, that's definitely a please, we have to look at moving the bus compound, because we have no, I mean, otherwise, to go to a softball game, where do you park? I mean, you, maybe in this field that's really kind, but you, maybe it won't be swampy, maybe behind, you know, right field.
Other than the playfield that we're currently constructing now, most of our work is campus side of the ball fields, and we don't do much in the ball fields. And I'm not gonna even claim to be part of administration and how these things work, but I know there's discussion about that bus.
I will say, there will be no parking back there in that access room until after everything's said and done. So, if you're thinking about this softball season, they'll have to park in the student parking lot and walk over. And then, of course, the Houseville seventeen or fourteen seventy-three, you know, we'll have people at the gates and things like that to help support that, but until after everything's said and done, and all the construction's complete, I don't know that there'll be an access area like we've always had for this upcoming season.
Would they be able to enter the, the road that runs along the baseball field where the garbage truck, no?
No, ma'am, that is gonna be a subcontractor site to be able to park and things like that. We also have opportunities for baseball players and things like that to park out there when subcontractors are gone for the evenings and things like that, for practices and all that stuff. But we've moved all of our waste pro stuff up towards, closer towards the school, that's in the process of being done as of Friday morning. But as of right now, there is no parking there.
Okay, then I think maybe you and I ought to get together and see if we could talk to the county about using those fields, that they're, just put some lights on, and just kinda make that softballs home, 'cause it seems to me that, you know, practice might be fine, but a game, when you got a team bus, I don't, I don't know.
Well, the team bus can still be in this, in the bus compound area, over in that area. They, they have the ability to build circle around, things like that. They've got the side entrance there where you just walk right around the corner to be able to be there at the gate. We can let people in that way, 'cause we've got a man that gate anyways when it's open, and get people into the softball field, because there's also a gate that we have closed and locked to open it to have access for people to get into the softball area.
Well, like Tim said, the new state laws on, on having gates locked and who can access, and then top that off with the Jessica Lunford Act, trying to keep people separated. It's, it's gonna be a very tedious situation.
But as far as for this spring, we'll have the student parking lot available for people to be able to park and walk that little area over. And we'll have enough access area there for the bus to safely come in and then turn around and park, if you will, and let the, let the athletes, student athletes off the bus to be able to go to the softball field.
I would like to not see them having to walk along Union, so maybe go through some, sideways through the bus compound?
Um, I don't know that.
That, I mean, that's something.
Because the bus compound would have to be open, then. I don't have the bus gate and all that stuff that look, trying to get to go open it and have access to that. And then you gotta think about, too, the number of gates that you're opening, that means the number of manpower people need to man those gates, and that's gonna be more difficult.
Right.
Well, Tim, check it out, and let the board know, let superintendent know what we want to do.
We'll walk through that.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Just remember that the CTE building from the original pond that's there, by that chocolate brown trailer, that building actually is three hundred feet long, it goes all the way to Ag. So, that'll give you some perspective of what you're talking about. And then it's sixty feet wide, so you know what the roadway looks like now, and then there's a ditch on the closest side to the baseball field. Well, from there, that way, you have that, that incline there to get to the batting cages and stuff. So, that's how big that building's actually gonna be once we start. Which is, I, I.
Now, is the brown trailer still, y'all's trailer is there, right? So, that takes even more space. I mean, hey, I know, I can see the end, so, but I'd say, I hear parents right now talking.
I know in families we're landlocked because of construction and things like that, but, you know, if you see the, you know, if you see the bigger picture, they'll see what we have with the Enry's hall. I tend to think, you know, like I mentioned to my teachers, we've gotta be flexible, and we've gotta be open for change, because parking, it can be an issue.
Right. It's gonna be beautiful.
Any further questions? If not, we're ready, you said you have to go through.
If you'd like us to go through that phasing part?
I mean, I.
Whatever the board wants us to do.
Would you all like to just?
Well, actually, the phasing part, I think that would be helpful, at least for me.
Sure, I'm gonna turn it over to Bryce, I don't know if you wanna go over there where you can point to it, or you wanna do it from here?
I should be able to do it from here, that way you can hear me, too. I'm gonna kinda, kinda. Yes, if you, if you look, I don't know, about halfway through your, your stack here, there is a, kind of a colored overlay, and a lot of those questions that you had with where certain buildings are, this might help paint a picture, 'cause we use this overlay to kinda build our master plan.
And we have larger copies.
Oh, yeah.
It's in there.
Does it have the page number?
No, it does not.
Okay, so, everybody on that page? Okay, so, like we said, you know, when we revised the schedule to help with the GMP, one of our first challenges is going to be getting in and doing the middle school. The middle school is the green area, that's kind of in the center of the page there. Those are where we've already relocated that portable and a couple other buildings that were, schools working on vacating those, so we can start. Currently, we have an anticipated start date to, you know, start working on demo and foundations, or demo and building pad the, the month of September. And this, like, like Mr. Bowings had mentioned, and Bill, is that this middle school would start this September and then be completed by July of next year. And along with that same breath, the CTE, which is the pink building, kind of on the lower side of the page, we have a December start date for that, that's one of the buildings that gets the helical piles, so that requires some load testing in the helical pile and the grade beams and whatnot. And then this is the other obstacle that we have, we're still dealing with the Florida Power and Light easement, which we did, I believe that was one of the documents that we wanted to mention as well today to get approval on that, so we can get that recorded and get it over to FPNL to get that in the works. You know, possibly we can get there, get all that sooner. Florida Power and Light has mentioned to us of a duration of six to ten weeks, once we do get the easement submitted. But there could be a chance, they've mentioned that it, it could be two weeks. Just knock on wood that we don't have any more storms or whatnot, or other obstacles that we can get them out there. So, they know, hopefully they understand the need to move that, and, you know, some of the ERP work, we're still working on relocating the, the electrical for that around the campus. So, the CTE, that would start this December and finish in July. So, the green building and the, the pink building would be complete for start of school next year. This would allow enough time to get staff established in there. We do have a lot of utilities that will kinda go coincide with these buildings. And then, at the same time, January twenty twenty-six, so, coming up, we'll be starting the gym building. And the gym building starts from January twenty twenty-six, or excuse me, twenty twenty-five to January twenty twenty-six. That's, we hope to have that in place, and that's where we said that the, the new admin would be. So, right after the, the fall break of twenty twenty-five into January twenty twenty-six, that's when the gym would be complete. And I'm gonna kinda point down to the page here, it says demo media. We're gonna keep the media in place, it actually falls in a good spot to where we can keep the media. And we've looked at with, with Travis and Tim for an opportunity for additional classrooms. Like Bill mentioned, we need to get classrooms, we need to keep those classrooms. So, if it's, if it's an opportunity to save, we're gonna do that. So, the media center will, will stay towards the end of, end of the construction. But after the gym's built, which is the yellow building, you'll see where we got the, I'll call it blue portion, it's kind of an L shape. We'll, we'll get into the core of the campus of demoing, you know, right at the beginning of January twenty twenty-six. Once we do that, then we'll start any building that we can. We do have a little, you know, a path to follow, but, you know, we wanna get all the buildings out of the footprint of the new admin and high school wing. And so, that would kind of complete the, the main building campus by December of twenty twenty-six. And as you can see on this overlay, you know, we still have a portion of demo of building one that we'll leave as long as we can, but there is the, the new bus loop in the way, the new parent drop off, and we have a large canopy out front. All that work will take place into the, the spring of twenty twenty-seven, correct? Yeah. And, but our main goal is to finish the building, and we'll have some, you know, shuffling around. We're gonna try to accomplish any parking that is available, new parking. We'll try to accomplish that during like a summer month or something where, where students aren't around, or work with, with Tim and his staff to kinda tackle that. But this, you know, it's, it's gonna be a lot, but we're up for the task. Any specific question? I might have missed the cafeteria, so cafeteria is gonna start, the new kitchen cafeteria, that's gonna start right after the CTE is built. And the CTE with the FPNL, all those things kind of line up. So, there is a critical sequence with some of those buildings, getting those going. And you can see all the dates, those dates are a start to finish date on those. And then we did provide a schedule in the GMP as well. If you wanna look at more of a bar line figure instead of plans, this kinda gives you a bar line, so you can kinda line up and see what buildings are, are being constructed at a certain time. And we did put demo, anticipated demo durations in that schedules as well. And then this shows you the, the end, the end date for the schedule, kind of tying into the overlay. So, hopefully that helps with some, seeing some of the existing buildings. Since you see those, those pink shaded buildings, those are the existing buildings. And you can see right here where you have the, the CTE building, and how, like, like Gil and Bill were talking about, how long that building is right there. Any particular questions we can answer on the schedule and overlay?
I have a question. The gym, you said, the gym building, which is a lot more than just the gym.
Yes.
You said January twenty-fifth, that, that building has to have the helio things, okay? So, so, January twenty-fifth of twenty-five would be the start of that building? And the completion projected would be January of twenty-six?
Yes, ma'am.
So, that means the fall sports of January twenty-six have.
So that means the fall sports, uh, January twenty-six have to, are, is the old gym still available?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay.
We're not, we're not removing something without building it.
And, and as, and as they go through it, they'll continue to find anomalies and things that they'll have to adjust to with Tim's, at Tim's request and at their request.
Well, that's, now I see why it got switched, okay.
Yeah, we have to build the new cafeteria before kitchen cafeteria before we demo the other one.
Yeah.
So, that's why that one's staying for a while.
In a hall, you can probably sell that gym floor once they demo it.
You know, we thought we could sell the one that I walked up and down for thirty-four years, but that didn't, I got some of it though.
It's a beautiful floor.
Yes, it is. The, the, where the media center is now is really just open courtyard space?
Yes, ma'am. At, at the, at the end of it, we do plan on getting in there, um, we put a, at the December twenty twenty-six date, um, we'll, we'll be removing that, we'll keep it there as long as, as we need, but then we'll kind of, kind of go back out the backside because we'll need a place to remove that, um, that building, um, after, after the fact, so it'll stay there.
And the two-story building, um, where the s, the high school kids are now, um, that is, that will be removed after the gym area?
Yes, ma'am.
Because that's where the classrooms are.
Yeah, most of the core of the campus will be demoed starting January twenty-six.
Okay. And what, nothing will be there on, on that particular?
Well, um, that particular school and the gym, once the new gym's built, that particular building, kind of the footprint actually falls into the new admin area.
So it needs the helio things too?
Not the, a portion of the, the high school needs that the admin doesn't.
Okay.
Doesn't need the helical piles.
But at the end of the day, yeah, that'll be an empty vacant space.
I don't feel picked on because when I used to go down there as school superintendent, she would get me out to the side and tell me what needed to be done every time, so I'm used to it. She loves that place because she spent so many hours there.
Absolutely. We're, we're, we'll do everything in our best ability to make it beautiful. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we ready for a motion? I'd like to make a motion that we accept the G M P for Crescent City Junior Senior High School.
I'll second that.
It's been motion by Mrs. Holly Pickens that we accept the G M P for Crescent City Junior Senior High School rebuild, and it was second by Mr. David Buckles. All right, uh, any further questions, colleagues? Are we ready to vote?
Well, let me ask one question. Now, the, the, the F P L survey is all part of this, so we're, we're in this, are we going to have to do that separate? We'll do a separate, okay, okay, that answered my question.
Okay. All right, and it's been second by Mr. David Buckles. All in favor, let it be known by aye. Aye opposes, motion carries unanimously. Okay, now we're ready for the F P L.
I'll make a motion that we approve the F P L easement as shown on our survey.
Second.
All right, motion by Mrs. Holly Pickens that we accept the F P L easement as shown on the, uh, printout, and it was second by Mr. Theo Leary. Uh, any further questions? Are we ready to vote? All in favor, let it be known by aye. Aye unanimous? Anything else to come before us? We want to thank you all for your work, uh, for your commitment, um, Mr. Woods. We thank you, Mr. Bowden, of course, and we thank you, Ms. Adams, for being here. You know your school. Hey, if you didn't, Holly will get you there, but you know you're going to need to walk through it, I swear it, thank you. All right, we are, um, super duper, you have anything?
I think we're good.
How about our attorney? Anything, everything good? Okay.
We're good.
Good.
Thank you.
All right.